Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will need a motion to approve of Mr. Longest. I think Mr. Hodges may join us later, but a motion to allow him to visit.
Don't lose it.
Second. A one favor.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Let's see, we'll call.
President.
Here.
Yeah.
Here, President. Okay. Need to approve in a minute, meeting minutes. We have October 13th, 2001, November 10th, 2021, January 12th, 2022.
I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see. We've got reviewing adoption meeting agenda. Let's skip that. You all, fair enough, because I'm both.
Sure.
You're doing great.
I'm gonna need some coaching from Chris.
This is, this is.
So I'm gonna have to suffer through with it. So let's see, we need to go through review and review and adopt of meeting agenda. I would like to move the treasurer for board and chairman for after we have presentations. In the interest of our presenter's time. Do I need a motion? Chris, yes, we've got another. So move, we move the treasurer for board and town to the bottom of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are none. Okay. Presentations, we've, we've got three presentations tonight. And one of them, Mr. Ashcroft has set up for us, and the other two. We talked about Kyle, Kelly and they are presenting, and we've got Tracy Porter, a guest who's gonna help, who's gonna talk to us about some various agricultural opportunities. So let's see, first on the agenda is Jackie Davis. Please, are you Jackie? Please, yeah. Pleased to have you. Pleased to, pleased to have, pleased to have your help.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for, for having me, I appreciate that.
How much time are you gonna need? We've got a really full agenda tonight, and so I wanna make sure we get everything you've got, but.
I can talk really quick, and if you have questions later, you can, you have my contact information, and you can contact me.
We'll be thorough, but I'm just, I'm just trying to be conscious of.
I'm usually five, 10 minutes, I'm not long.
That's right.
Well, I want to thank you first for having me here tonight, I appreciate that, having me and taking up your time. I wanna give you a little bit of overview of what the Virginia Career Works workforce system is, as it relates to the workforce development boards. Let me go to the next slide. WIW was signed into law in 2014, it replaced the previous workforce law. There's four titles under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Title one is what we directly oversee as workforce board, the adult dislocated worker and youth programs. The workforce development boards fall under that. Title two is adult education, they have regional providers. Title three is our Wagner Pizer, which is administered by the Virginia Plymouth Commission. And then title four is our vocational rehabilitation. And there, that's administered by two agencies, the Department for the Blind, Visually Impaired, as well as the Department for Agent and Rehabilitative Services. And you can go to the next slide. There are 14 workforce development boards across the state, and each region has its own workforce development board. And those boards are made up of both private and public sector members. And they're also overseen by a group of CLEO, they're called CLEOs, the chief local elected officials, and a lot of places they're called consortiums. And we have 16 in our area, because our area is 16 jurisdictions, so we have 16 CLEO members. We also provide, and, and those, the board and the CLEOs provide strategic oversight for a board of how workforce development activity is gonna be provided in the area. The boards by state code are, are deemed the regional conveners of the state workforce system, so we work with all the partners, make sure all the, the services are streamlined as they're coming in to try to reduce duplication of services. Because a lot of our services do overlap, and we can partner and complement each one another. And you can go to the next slide. When I say regional convener, this is just our state workforce partners, that's not counting. Agencies and organizations that don't fall under that. And with those eight agencies right there, there's about 24 different workforce programs that can be provided. On top of any nonprofits or other agencies or organizations that provide workforce services. And we like to partner with anyone who we think brings any kind of value to the system. So in our Fredericksburg region, we have an agency called Fail Safe, and they work with nothing but a reentry population. So we look for individuals like that that helps complement and provide the wraparound support services to help make individuals successful. Let me go to the next slide. This talks about our Title One program, the adult, it tells, the, the top part is the eligibility. We do put a priority of service towards veterans, individuals with low income or basic skills deficiency. We also serve dislocated workers, these are individuals who are laid off at no, no fault of their own, displaced homemakers, unemployed, small businesses as well. You, they have to have some type of barrier to education or employment, and they can fall under any of those, those, those sectors right there, low income, runaway, individual, an individual with disability, or basic skills deficient, or behind in school. Let me go to the next slide. Services that are available to adult and dislocated workers, we provide basic career skills, individual, career skills, some training and follow-up services, and also help with business services. Let me go to the next slide. And that just tells you what the basic career services are. These are things that we have available in our workforce, in our Virginia Career Work Centers. We have, we have four, three are better than, than the other one. We have a comprehensive center in the Fredericksburg region, we have, in the Northern Neck, we have a Warsaw, it's in Warsaw. Here in the Middle Peninsula, we have a center, it's located in Middlesex DSS, and it only houses our Title One folks. But I have been working with Louie Lawrence in the Middle Peninsula to try to bring a, a type of a center here that has more than just the Title One services, so that we can have the Wagner Pizer service and the vote rehab and adult ed all put house together. And you can go to the next slide. This part, and the next slide just talks about the individual career services. We sit down with the individuals, we go through, figure out what their career goals are, where they're at, what, what skills they need, what skills they have, and try to help them build a plan in order to be successful. And try to figure if there's anything that's going to make them not be successful, and how we can overcome those barriers. Some of the training service that we have, occupational skills training, and that's talking about someone who's coming in and say they want CDL, they wanna take their CDL, we can help them with that, welding and those types of things. On-the-job training, this is actually a business service, so if we have a business and we can connect them with a, a individual that we have in our program, we can help subsidize that wage for that individual for a certain amount of time. It's based on the federal NICS code. So those are some of the things, and we have youth, well, with this, we have work experience for adults as well as our youth, but work experience, we can pay a wage or subsidy to the individual instead of the employer paying it, to give someone work experience. And then we can provide them supportive services while they're in that training, whether it's transportation, childcare, any, if it's a CNA or a weld or any uniform type things that they have to have, we can help with those. With the CDL, we can help them with their physical to get them into training as well. Follow-up services, we follow these individuals for a year, once we get them trained, to get them into a position to make sure that they, they're doing what they need to be doing, and that they're not running into any other barriers or struggles to make them not be successful. And then we also refer them out to our partners as well, because some of our partners can do things better than we can. So we try to partner with individuals who can help individuals be the best that they can be. So then, we have our youth, these are things that we do with our youth, this is the ones where we try to handhold these individuals, because they tend to need more, more support than our adults and dislocated workers. A lot of the times we see the youth that we see don't have work modeled in the home, so we try to help them with that, with work experiences and those types of things, and working with the businesses to put a youth that was a good fit with them, and then we pay for that work experience for a certain amount of time for those individuals. Um, let me go to the next slide, that just just talks more about work experience and training. We also do pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship opportunities for youth as well. Some of the support services, these are some of the things that we can pay for while they're in training, and we also have a special, a special grant now, so once an individual receives a job, we can help them with transportation, once they get the job to, for a certain period of time, to help them overcome any barriers, so they can continue to keep the job that they have instead of trying to quit. The next, let me go to the next slide, these are some of the things that we provide to businesses, and businesses are supposed to be our number one customer. These are the, they also drive the training that is provided in our workforce centers. Work, this, the business services and works hand in hand with economic development. You have a business coming in, the first thing they wanna know is, do you have the talent? And this is one of the things that we can help with, with recruiting and screening individuals for, for jobs. We have a Virginia, we have a system of records, the Virginia Workforce Connection, where both employers and job seekers can both register in this system, and job seekers can search for jobs, structural businesses, job openings, and apply for those job openings. But the business as well can search for individuals that match the criteria that they have, that they're looking for. And this can happen one of two ways, the, the business can do it themselves, we have several businesses that, that do their own job searching, or we have staff that can help businesses with that. They'll, they'll pull a, a, a report, and they can go through them and then ref, refer back to the business, which ones they feel meet the criteria that they're looking for. I talked a little bit earlier, but on the job training, we also have incoming worker training that we provide, these are for, to upscale the current workforce that our business already has. We have done that with a business in King William County, they had 50 individuals that they wanted to upscale, the training cost about $52,000, we were able to reimburse them $26,000. We didn't have $26,000 in our budget, but we were able to go to the state and request governor set aside funding to help pay for that. Right now, we're working with a business in King William County, there are 15 employees, and they want to give them an industrial maintenance certificate. That's gonna cost the business about $22,500, and went the process of doing the paperwork, so we will be able to reimburse them about $11,000 of that funding, and that is funding that we do have in our budget to provide to them. We also have, working with our partner agencies as a work opportunity tax credit that's available to employers. These are open to employers who are hiring individuals in targeted sectors, especially veterans who are unemployed, disabled, who are receiving SNAP benefits, if they hire a returning citizen, or if they are, hire an individual who is a TANAC or SNAP recipient. We can also provide labor market information to businesses, this can help them predict their current and their future labor force needs in the area. And then we also have rapid response services, and these rapid response dollars can help a business, and this, these are the governor set aside funds that we requested for the business, where we, we reimbursed them to $26,000. When they, we presented it to the state because they wanted pneumatic training for their staff. This was a layoff version, if that, if this business had, had a breakdown of something, they would have to shut the entire plant and wait for someone to come in. With this training, they were able to avoid a layoff, because they had the staff there that was already trained. And also with rapid response dollars, if there is a mass layoff in the area, then the individuals, this rapid response team would come in and present to both the employer and the employees of the resources available in the community that can help them. Either the employees to be trained into another field, or, or help them transition into a new job. And that is all I have. And the best way to contact me if you have any questions, is either by email or my cellphone, which is the, the bottom phone number.
I think this is a gift, Mr. Ashcroft, thank you for the gift. It's a, this, I, I think this is one of those things that we can put in our bucket of resources.
Right.
And it's great to know about it, I didn't know it existed, and just thank you so much for, for bringing this in. I, I don't know where this piece fits, but we know about it now, and, you know, we'll, anyway, thank you for coming.
Jackie, have you got examples of where this has been used here in King William? Have you, have some businesses that have taken advantage of these resources?
We, we do, we have the one business in King William, we did the incoming worker training, where we up scaled 50 of their staff in pneumatic training, and we reimbursed them for half the funding. And we're also working with the business now to upscale 15 individuals for industrial maintenance.
What, did you name these businesses?
I didn't. It's West Rock.
Okay.
Yep, West Rock.
West Point.
Yep, and then Rapid Hana Community College is, we have to, for our services, the, the adult dislocated worker services, we have to put our RFP for, for an agency or organization to provide services to the individuals. And Rapid Hana Community College holds that contract, and I, in your folders, I do have a breakdown of how many individuals they've served here in King William County, they serve both the Northern Neck and the Middle Peninsula for us.
Do, do you exclusively work with private enterprise, or will you also, do you also work with needs, like, do you work with economic developments at the board?
Yes, we do, if, if you, like, if you have a business that needs help, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just asking whether, whether it's exclusive to private enterprise, or whether it, it can serve the broader, I, I don't know where this piece fits, that's why I'm asking.
Yep, it can, so economic develop, if you are working on either a business in your area expanding, or they want to upscale their workforce, we can certainly talk and figure out if we can help provide funding and support for that business. You know, help with, you know, you have a business that's expanding, and they want to do some recruiting, we can, we can talk about that too.
Have you, do you have a website for people to go in to apply for jobs, or what have you been talking about earlier?
So that's the Virginia Workforce Connection, it's V A, it's a Virginia State website, but if you Google V A W C or Virginia Workforce Connection, it'll, it should pop up for you, and it should have Virginia Career Works. It's also on, I think it's on the, one of those flyers in the page, yeah. But if you don't, can't get to it, let me know, and I can send it to, send you a link in an email.
I didn't know whether it was, you know, broad as it was, or individual counties.
No, it's statewide, and you can go in and you can narrow your search down by zip code, you can do locality, you can do it by community college, you can do it by workforce board, I think, you know, plan and district commission, there's, there's several different ways you can search.
All right, if a new business came to the county and wanted to work for Wolfburg, can we go for you, or?
Yep. You can go through us, just call me, we just have to get, if that business is not already registered in that V A W C system, we get them registered, and we can either have staff show them how to use it, so they can do it themselves, or we can have staff do it for them.
All right, one trying to push us along here a little bit.
Nope. If you have any questions, you have my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you, Stag.
Next up, we've got RKG.
How about that? Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you allow me to share my screen, please?
You packed up.
I'm sorry?
Gene was asking to try to turn the volume up.
Cut up some, a little hotter here.
I'm sorry. I'll do my best, I, I will talk louder.
All right.
I, I do need to be able to share my screen though, please.
So Kyle, my understanding is we're just gonna get an update tonight, and just sort of a progress update, or is, is, what, what's the?
Oh, I have, I have a presentation for you in, in the findings for the target industry and SWOT analysis.
Oh, great, okay.
So I, that's why I need to be able to share my screen, I have a presentation I wanna share with all of you.
Nice, look forward to it.
There we go. Let me know when you can see the screen.
We got it.
Perfect. Wonderful, well, thank you for having me this evening. I will, I will try to be thorough but brief, me, as well. And so I, I wanna kinda walk you through the results of the target industry and SWOT analysis that we've done to date, and to be able to provide you with that information and then get some feedback. And just so you all know, the, my expectation is to come back at the March meeting and present the preliminary fiscal impact analysis that we're in the process of doing right now. So to jump in though, from a target industry methodology, there are several key questions that we ask when we're trying to understand where the opportunities are for a community. You know, is there a local specialization, are the jobs growing locally or regionally? And regionally is always important, because oftentimes, opportunities don't see jurisdictional boundaries, and so what's going on well around, in our neighbors and around us benefits us as too. Is the industry competitive relative to comparable regions in the state? You know, are we going to have any success trying to attract a business here, given what our competitive advantages and disadvantages are? Is the industry able to capitalize on the county strengths? So, you know, are, are we trying to fit a square peg in a round hole, if you will, or is this something that fits naturally with what we have? And is the industry consistent with the goals of the local community? And this is particularly important, especially for a community like King William, where you wanna make sure that the types of businesses and growth and development that you attract are consistent with the character and the scale of your community. And so the idea of trying to, you know, go too big, or, 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 or too disruptive oftentimes can lead to public resistance, and as a result, make it challenging to be successful. So we looked at a number of business climate factors, including both state, regional, and local strengths and weaknesses, and we're gonna go through all that. We did perform a SWOT analysis, and we're gonna present that back to you, and then we did look at job growth and a, and a cluster analysis to understand, not just in King William, but, but locally and regionally, what is being successful? And then broke that down and did our, our thing, if you will, and came up with some recommendations for you all. So just to give you some visual reference, hopefully you can see this, King William County is right here in the middle of the bright red area. But we, we analyzed three different, what we're calling regions, because we wanted to make sure that not only did we capture what's going on locally, but what's going on in other areas that are influencing and influenced by King William. And so the, the first, what we're calling Region One, the bright red area, obviously King William, Caroline, Hanover, King and Queen, and New Kent. Region Two is Richmond and Hunterico County, and understand what's going on there, and what is our opportunities to try and piggyback off the success and the economic gravity that they have. And then finally, Region Three, which is Charles City County, James City County, and Williamsburg, and our connection to them through West Point, and through 295, and, and 360, making sure we understood what's going on, and trying to maximize what the potential is for our community. So kinda looking through some of the business climate factors, some of the assets that we have, what you're seeing here, there's a, there's an entity called Prosperity Now that ranks each state based on its competitiveness and a number of economic factors. And what we're looking at is the, those factors where the Commonwealth of Virginia and, and by definition, King William County has some competitive advantages. And the ones that I wanna focus in on a little bit are unemployment rate, we have a very low unemployment rate, and, which is a good thing, in one manner, from a standpoint of, is that we have a lot of folks working, but it also, from an economic development perspective, can be a little bit of a challenge, insofar as we don't have a lot of unemployed or underemployed people. And that's particularly an issue for our community, because we're so small, is that our labor force, particularly our local labor force, isn't the largest. I also wanted to focus in a little bit on the education attainment, and while it's very, very strong regionally, and you're gonna see on the next graphic, is that, oh, the education attainment in King William is a little bit different. We're much more a production, blue collar-based community than the average in the Commonwealth. Not, it's not a good or a bad thing, it's just the fact that it is something a little bit different, and it came into factor when we were trying to consider what the opportunities were from a target industry perspective. On the backside of the coin, you know, the things where maybe Virginia is not as competitive nationally, you know, one of the issue is the affordability of homes. Obviously, there are particularly, some areas of Virginia, like where I live, it's extremely expensive, however, that is not the case in King William, you are actually relatively more affordable than much of your other communities. And looking through the comp plan analysis, it shows in the demographic changes that have happened in King William, where you have a lot higher concentration of, of family-based households, as opposed to retirees or young, up and coming households, if you will. The other issue that I wanted to point out is healthcare. One of the challenges we did see through this, or we did recognize through this process, is the issue that we don't have a large healthcare facility in the county. And that's not a bad thing on face value, but it does have an effect particularly on those folks that are acutely sensitive to having access to that type of service in their community. This next slide looks at the change over time in what many CEOs who have been interviewed by a magazine called Area Development Magazine rank as the most important factors when they're selecting a location for their business. And the, the big takeaway here, the one that I really wanna point out to you is how the availability of skilled labor has steadily increased in its importance over the years. And now, in, in the most recent survey that's been released in 2020, it's the most important thing to a business. And so I go back to the, the factors of, in King William, we don't have the same education attainment as we, as the Commonwealth of Virginia, or some of our neighboring counties, but more importantly is, we just don't have a very large labor force. And so that is influential from an economic development perspective in terms of scale, and the scale of the types of businesses that RKG would recommend that you pursue. And so because of that issue, our focus and what we're started looking at through the target industry is, you know, industries where they have higher concentrations of small companies. Generally, companies less than 50 jobs is how we're defining small companies, but we would strongly encourage, as King William gets into business recruitment, is to focus on those smaller businesses, to support industries, if you will. Maybe not necessarily the large manufacturer themselves, but the ancillary support, production or support business that supports that manufacturer, because we're gonna have much more success in that realm, because of the, the scale of our community, than we would if we tried to go after, say, a 500-person company. The other thing is that the, the second strongest thing, as you see, is highway accessibility. It's not that we don't have good transportation access, it's just that there are other communities and other sites that are available that have better transportation access, particularly the interstate system. However, I mean, we'll talk in just a little bit, you know, we do think that there's some opportunities, particularly on the western portion of the county, where you, it's a, it's a fairly straight shot across Route 30 to Interstate 95, and connections to the markets that that brings you to. On the flip side, quality of life and labor costs are substantial advantages for King William, and we think there's some opportunities, and we'll talk about them in just a little while, that goes around with that, particularly the quality of life and cost of living factor, especially as we come out of this, this COVID-19 pandemic, and companies are becoming more and more comfortable with telecommuting and remote working, and there's a substantial opportunity to attract individuals that bring their job and their paycheck to King William County and live there, and then do, you know, work for a company that's in Northern Virginia, or Washington DC, or in Richmond, or in the Virginia Beach area. And they can take advantage of the lower cost of living, the higher quality of life, but still maintain their employment with the companies they have in these more expensive, frankly, markets. So when we looked at it, breaking all of that down, along with our analysis, looking at it from a strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats, obviously, you know, starting with the strengths, is you have existing and potential property available for non-residential development. In fact, there's a number of properties identified. In fact, there's a number of properties identified in the, the Go Virginia Region Six study that have the potential to get to tier four development ready status with some investment. And so the fact that you have property that is available and property that is already appropriately zoned is, is, is a tremendous asset. I already mentioned access to 95, 295 and I-64 that connects you to the three large Virginia regional marketplaces. And obviously 95 even further connects you to the most populous and wealthy and, and economically active region of the US, which is the East Coast. You know, once again, I mentioned the western portion of Route 30 all up out there by the border has some potential. It's not currently zoned for that. And maybe it hasn't been considered for that, but from an economic development perspective, it does have some opportunities there. Housing costs are relatively cheaper here. It is attracting young families. And when we do the, the fiscal analysis, we'll see whether that has a, a dollar benefit or, or impact to the community. But it does lend itself to bring working age individuals to the community. And so if jobs were made available, there's opportunity to provide them with housing options. The county's raw materials are plentiful. I don't need to explain to you the value of the timber or the clay or the Fuller's earth and the businesses that have come and located and, and continue to thrive in King William because of that. And then water access is, is a strength from an economic development perspective, particularly from recreational tourism, economic development and the opportunities, you know, people are attracted to the water. That is a, that is a, a national trend, not just city, local or regional one. And so there are some opportunities there. In terms of weaknesses, King William, you are on the edge of the Richmond market with comparatively low availability of skilled labor. And so while it is potential to try and draw folks from Richmond or from the Williamsburg area, that the likelihood of a company choosing to locate here and making their workers commute, you know, 30, 40, 50 minutes to work is lower because there are opportunities in those other markets to be closer to their labor. Infrastructure is limited in certain areas and, and I will say, one of the biggest weaknesses is the access to fiber. Looking through the GO6 Economic Development Plan, it identified that about 57% of King William County's residents have access to fiber internet service. That could be, that's a tremendous challenge from a business perspective, but also has an impact for when I talked about the remote working component. Because one of the critical pieces of being able to work remotely is having access to reliable high speed internet. The interstates are closed, as I mentioned, but there are sites that are closest, closer in other counties. And so that could be a competitive disadvantage for us. And I will tell you, maybe one of the most notable things that we learned in terms of weakness is most of your non-residential properties are not inventoried or professionally marketed. And in our research and anecdotal analysis and conversations with the other individuals, other professionals, that is, that could be a particular challenge when a company is trying to identify an opportunity. It's the, a substantial amount of economic development site selection is done virtually these days. And so if the information is not available of what sites are available and how much they're going to cost or what the rent is going to be, that could put your community at a disadvantage. And so that is definitely one of the weaknesses we identified. There are two, as you all know, there are two primary roads that run through King William. So that does limit opportunities. It's not, that's not necessarily a bad thing because spreading that type of development out may not be in the best interest of the community long term, but it does limit where it can go. And the county does not have a, and I mentioned this already, the county does not have a major medical facility and, or a post-secondary facility. And while it's fantastic, you had the presentation about the workforce development right before this, there, that can be a challenge in the fact of getting those services to the county as opposed to having those services in the community. From an opportunities perspective, I already mentioned much of this. Marketing quality of life options to telecommuters is definitely something that can draw economic development and frankly be very low impact of economic development from the standpoint of needing physical space to, to be successful. And we mentioned the western portion of Route 30. The clustering residential development can create critical mass for retail growth. And I have a slide about that in just a moment. But the, the, the fact that you are creating higher density residential development in the central, central garage area in West Point is a good thing. Because you want to create that critical mass, because that definitely helps out with retail recruitment. If it's something that you want to do. Strengthening and growing your recreational tourism market, I mentioned that already. And then regulatory programs to transfer development rights. This is one thing that I learned when we did the driving tour is the potential for some areas where maybe you don't want development to occur. The, those property owners can sell the rights to that development into areas like Central Garage and West Point. And so that you can create higher level intensity development, which might be able to make the projects more financially feasible while keeping the total level of development in the county stable. And so it, it, it avoids sprawl, if you will, which it could, will benefit your community long-term, particularly as I talked about earlier, about trying to build critical mass for your retail growth. Some of the threats, obviously when you're, when you're an ex-urban community, the balance between the rural character and growth necessary to achieve some of the community wishlist items is going to be an issue and that's going to be a particular issue as I, when I talk about the retail section, section in a moment. Empressurized zoning can allow less favorable uses to consume your scarce land resources you have. And you'll see in our, my, I believe my next slide, some development trends had a substantial amount of self-storage developed. And self-storage in itself is not a bad thing, but it doesn't create jobs. It doesn't create a, a lot, any wealth and, but it does consume a substantial amount of real estate to be able to do that. And so not being allowed to do that in some areas where we would rather see job creation or businesses that are going to increase the wealth of the community, it could be, it could be a threat. Inefficient development codes can lead to large consumption of land. Part, this is partially due to the fact because not all the county is served with, with, with infrastructure that there's limitations to what you can do. But the reality is, is we don't want to spread our development out, which is going to minimize the potential benefit it has to the community. Trying to find ways to continue to concentrate it and build those critical masses are important. And then, once again, the lack of organized marketing inventory will preclude you from, from most site surges. And the percentage in the research for site selection is about 90% is done online well before a community ever even knows that a prospect is interested. And so if we don't have that information, it's not being maintained and updated and it's not complete with the price of the land or the lease of the land or, or what the, the, the interest is in terms of the disposition from the owner. That can be a challenge to you all. So I mentioned a moment ago, talking about the real estate development, we went and looked back at all the non-residential development that occurred over the past 20 years. And you can see here that it, there hasn't been a substantial amount of investment. And in fact, I believe there's been only four or five of these were done in the last 10 years. I just, I want to draw your attention to two things. One, the development of shopping centers. And the, the, when we talk about the retail, that you've had a substantial amount of, of retail development already, which is some of the reason why what you're going to learn in our next slide. And then the warehouse and distribution where this is predominantly self-storage. So those are the two largest growth areas we've had over the past 20 years. You know, this one is good. It met needs of the community. This one, from an economic development perspective, maybe isn't the best utilization of those 92 acres. You can see how much land it has consumed for such a small amount of development. So I, I met, I mentioned the retail a moment ago. In conversations, I know that there's substantial interest in the community for different types of retail development. And so we use the information that was in the comp plan, which was the sales leakage by category. And then I wanted to say, well, what would that translate into in terms of supportable new building space? Because I wanted to be able to give an answer, you know, one of the things we heard time and time again through this process is we want to, we want a pharmacy. We want a CVS or a Walgreens or that type. That's, the community is clamoring for that. And so there's, it's a math problem, right? This is not because of lack of effort by the county. I know in talking with MEED that, that the county has tried several times to attract a pharmacy, for example. But it's, it, the reality is, is that it's a math problem. Do you have enough demand to be able to justify a, a business, a credit tenant business like CVS or Walgreens to open a facility in your community? And so what you're looking at here is to boil it all down. We assumed that we had the potential to recapture half of the leaking sales. And I will tell you, that may not seem like much, but that is a very aggressive recapture rate for sales because people's habits are usually ingrained. People shop near where they work and you have a substantial amount of your residents who work outside of the county. They have store type preferences. And so that could be a challenge too. But we, we, we just for the sake of this analysis, used a very aggressive capture rate of 50%. And the math is this, this number, the capital sales is half the sales leakage. These are numbers that we got from Urban Land Institute in terms of the average sale per square foot by store type. And then this is what could be supportive, given your current leakage based on that 50% capture rate. And just for comparative purposes, and I'll make sure that you all get this presentation. So you can look at this on your own time too. We put in average source size, size for these types of stores. So I'm, I'm just going to point you out to the health and personal care stores. You can see here our leakage sales based on sales expected return for those can support about 4,400 square feet. Your typical national credit tenant pharmacy chain is 20,000 to 40,000 square feet. And so I, I say this, I, I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer here to your community, but I wanted to make sure you had the information. So as you move forward with your recruitment strategies and with what you're trying to accomplish, you understand the realities of what it's going to take to be able to make some of these things happen. And so with you, when you have the potential to support 4,400 square feet and you need enough to support 20,000 to 40,000, it, it helps you understand how many more households that need to consume pharmacy products would need to be brought to the community to be able to, to justify an additional. Because you already have a, a pharmacy in West Point, but do we just end, justify an additional one? And what, we're not here to say you should or you shouldn't. We're just here to say, this is what it's going to take to make it happen. And then you as a community have to determine if that's something that you wanted to do. Now, I, I, like I said, I wanted to share this. I was asked to share this in this meeting. So I wanted to make sure that this information was made available and it will be part of our analysis. And like I said, I will make this, the slide presentation available to all of you. So you can look at it on your own time. But I just wanted you to understand. The positive news in all of this is restaurants, that there is supportable square footage for additional dining services. If you look at just a 50% recapture, you could support potentially up to another 20,000 to 25,000 square feet. Your typical fast food restaurant is about 3,000 to 5,000 square feet. Your typical sit-down restaurant is about 10,000 square feet. So there is opportunity. There is opportunity to bring new consumption in those realms to the community. And so if you're looking for a strategy of how to build quality of life, that could be one area where you could have some success bringing some companies under your current conditions. So the next couple of slides are looking at labor market trends. And I'm going to, you, we don't need to read this. So this is looking at employment shifts over the past 10 years. This is for King William County. Obviously, we tried to color code it. Green means it's the growth and red means there was decline. This is a positive news. You see the, the net increase in employment in King William County over that 11 years. You know, dominated by transportation warehousing, which to us is not terribly surprising. King William County in this part of Virginia is centrally located, not just within Virginia to be able to serve Hampton Roads, Richmond and Northern Virginia, which is the main economic drivers in the state, but to serve all of the mid-Atlantic and the East Coast. And so it's not terribly surprising this area is getting a tremendous amount of, of interest. I'm looking at manufacturing, agriculture, forestry. This is taking advantage of the strengths you already have through the, the kitty litter plant, through the paper mill. It makes a whole lot of sense of this is the type of growth that we're experiencing. So what this graphic shows very quickly, the size of the bubble is the total number of jobs. Whether it's on the left side or the right side is how concentrated it is. So a 1.0, so this dark black line means you have about the same amount of jobs as all of region one. And then whether it's higher or lower is percentage growth. And so if I go back here, you see the strong growth in transportation warehousing. That translated into almost a 450% growth because there wasn't very much. And so that's a substantial amount of growth. So industries that land in this quadrant, the upper right-hand corner tend to be the highest concentration and also the ones that are doing the best. It's not terribly surprising to me that forestry, fishing, hunting and agricultural support is very strong here. You have, excuse me. Excuse me. Manufacturing is fairly strong here and obviously the growth in transportation warehousing. When we looked at it as all of region one, if you remember, that was the bright red area that includes our county. You can see how strong transportation warehousing logistics has been. One of the bigger differences for the, our region as opposed to us is the strong growth in healthcare and social systems and professional services. Both of them, we believe are opportunities for the county. We don't have a, we don't have a very big presence and we haven't seen a tremendous amount of growth, but it's growing regionally. And there are opportunities to tie, tap into that. Once again, on the smaller scale, we're not talking about hundreds of jobs. We're talking about companies of two, three, five, 10, 12, has a potential to be brought to the community. And so when we look at region one, once again, the strength of growth of transportation warehousing is evident. The frankly, one of the impacts of King William County is driving this for the entire region one area. But you can see a lot of it is also kind of stable, which is not necessarily a bad thing, frankly, because this does include the impacts from COVID-19. So we also looked at region two, which is the Richmond and Henry Rico County area. And you can see right off the bat, professional services and other services, the largest growth. It's not terribly surprising that, you know, Richmond is a service-based economy. And that's where they're seeing the strongest amount of growth. Healthcare is another big growth area. That's also not terribly surprising as our baby boomer generation, which makes up a very large proportion of our society continues to age into retirement years. You know, they, older folks tend to demand higher healthcare services. And so as our population grows, particularly amongst our plus 55 community, you're going to see continued increase in demand for those services. However, you can see now on the other side, the impact frankly, what COVID has done, particularly for the retail trade and food and accommodation services. Once again, I, I reiterate that this includes those COVID numbers and you can see what that has done for our economy, particularly the city of Richmond that had a lot of business travel, business events that were coming to it and what the impact of that is. And here you can see its concentrations, obviously things like services, healthcare are very, very strong in these regions, in this region in particular. And, but also brings to some, once again, some potential to, to draw off that on the smaller ancillary support services component of it. Finally, we looked at region three, which is the Williamsburg, Charles City County, James City County. And you can see here, that is economy that is substantially dependent upon tourism, substantially dependent upon events, both business and leisure and the food and accommodation, arts, entertainment, recreation. And you could see here, just over the last couple of years, the dramatic impact it has had on their economy. Now they do have a large and growing active adult and senior population. So you see the growth in healthcare. And being on I-64 and being a little bit more cost effective than being in Richmond proper, you can also see the growth in transportation warehousing. But you can see the effect that COVID has had on the economy. The hope, the hope is this will recover and, and especially in short order, but you can see what it has done to their economy. So boiling all of this down, now that I've brought you to tears with numbers and data to get you into the meat of the story, which is the targeted industry clusters that we would recommend for King William County. Obviously, once again, transportation warehousing is one. We believe that particularly not just Central Garage or West Point, but we also believe that Route 30 on the western edge of the county has a tremendous potential for that as well. Having the straight shot to Interstate 95. And you can see some of the different types of businesses, you know, aquaculture and, and marine-based food production is very, very strong in the region. So cold storage could be an area of, of potential success for King William County. On the agricultural and forestry side, I mean, this, I don't need to explain to you what this is. You already know the strength that you have here. However, there are opportunities for growing from what's called agritourism. Particularly the distilleries, wineries, breweries, connecting in with like wedding venues, farmers markets. This could be a, these have been very successful throughout Virginia and the US to help ex-urban communities to try and drive more business, drive more economics into their communities. You get it frankly, on both ends, on the manufacturing side of the creation of the, the spirits or the wines or the beer. But then also on the tourism side, because these venues oftentimes become experiential. Where you come and you stay for a day or you stay for multiple days and you hit a number of them almost on like a, on a, on a wine tour. This has become extremely popular in Loudoun County and in Fauquier County. And there's no reason why we couldn't replicate that here, given the, the pastoral and frankly, very bucolic settings that we have. From an industrial perspective, obviously the wood products is a big one. There is a potential for artisan and home goods. Um, there is a potential for artisan and home goods production. Once again, we're focusing in on small scale businesses. These might be one to five person bakeries. It might be uh, for people who do um, uh, commercial pottery development, those sorts of things. Obviously, food products manufacturing, you mentioned the aquaculture and the seafood based food manufacturing that strengthen the region. And also automotive service and repair. You already have a little bit of a cluster of that here in the community. And this could be an area where you continue to grow jobs and support services for your community. It's not the most attractive and may not be one that you highly desire. And so you may not pursue it, but it is an option out there for you. Um, research laboratories, because of some of the uh, natural resources that you have. Uh, between like Fuller's earth and the local minerals, you have wetlands and the rivers. Um, there are potentials to grow some research opportunities in the community. Once again, we're talking small scale, but there's potential there. I already talked about the healthcare and the social assistance component. You are, you are relatively underserved for your population, particularly since there isn't a larger healthcare facility in the county. And so the opportunity to continue to grow. Um, I will say childcare services probably has one of the strongest opportunities, particularly given the the strength of your family based um, demographic growth here. And then, as I mentioned, entertainment and recreation is building upon that agritourism and the potential for um, growing the the venues and growing the 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 destination so that it goes from being a one day or a or a daytime trip to overnight. And that's really where tourism based economic development creates value. Because when they're staying at hotels or bed and breakfast, the amount of spending is through research shows goes up quite substantially. So that is the presentation that I have for you. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, Kyle, what did last chart you had there? So you're the bottom line here is in King William. You listed agriculture and forestry, industrial research or research labs and so forth. In in that particular order, that's what what I want to try to ask you is which, I guess agriculture and forestry is a big item?
Yes, I would say I would.
Concentrating and the others fall in behind. Is that listed in order of where you think we should excel in?
Um, I, yes, I would say. I I would say it it is in order of the, the greatest potential for success to the the most more modest potential for success. Okay. I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure it should be where you focus, where you, where you should focus is based on the the priorities and the values of the community. But looking at it, um, objectively, these where we think you're going to have the greatest potential for success if you were to pursue that directly.
Okay. All right. Kyle, can you go back to uh, the screen where you showed the leakage?
Yep.
And the assumption was fifty percent recapture rate? What would you, what would you typically expect to see a recapture rate be?
It 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 generally ranges between the, the way we do the analysis, it generally ranges between twenty and forty percent. We usually do a what we call conservative, moderate and aggressive. And it tends to be twenty, thirty and forty percent. I dropped in a fifty percent recapture rate because I wanted to to truly show you if you really hit a home run and were able to draw back a lot of this spending, which is not easy to do. What that would look like in terms of the supportable square footage, which is that next to last column there.
And just to to follow up there. So the real only category that where we have supportable square footage to meet the average store square footage in in the categories that you presented is restaurants. Or is there another one that I just can't see?
No, no, that that's about right. Now, once again, so you, could you get a boutique style pet supply store? To open up in fifteen hundred square feet where they're selling very specific items? Yes. But when we're talking about what a traditional store in these marketplaces. Yeah, restaurants, the dining is the one where you, 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 your supportable square footage exceeds what the average store is. Now, I will say the general merchandise. If I remember correctly, Stephen told me on our tour that there's a new uh, either Dollar General or a new dollar store that purchased land is in the process of developing. That is completely consistent with the unmet sales of the supportable square footage in a general merchandise store. Because if we were to drop this to twenty to fifty, forty percent, it would be right in the, I guess, the fifteen to twenty five thousand, maybe fifteen to eight, twenty eight thousand square foot range, which is about what that store is going to be. So that that business, uh, and I, and forgive me, I don't remember if it's Dollar Tree or Dollar General. But um, that business saw this information and said fifteen to twenty thousand square feet of general merchandise sales is right in our wheelhouse. And so that's the reason why you saw that business uh, identify a site and come to to King William County.
Uh, also, I also heard you say at one point, you said there's plenty of opportunity or or land. Uh, um, depending on who you talk to, sometimes the conversation revolves around, we need to zone more land for business. Does with, um, if you zone it, will they come?
No, I think you, I think it, when I, when I, especially when I went through the Go Virginia report, I mean, there is a substantial amount of land. Well, I shouldn't say that. If I, I, I'm going to mess up the number, but it's well over three hundred or four hundred acres of land zoned for um, non-residential development right now. And just because it's zoned, doesn't mean they're going to come. I think the strategy that's laid out in the Go Virginia Region Six Plan, which is how do we identify a handful of sites? Frankly, ones that are already zoned industrial because it's easier and get them into a higher state of readiness. Will then start bringing in users. And so I think the issue isn't necessarily volume, it's quality. And along those lines, and part of that quality conversation is also having very clear inventories. And frankly, price points of of what it's going to take. If 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 the advert, if the, if the advertisement says I have a twenty acre piece of land that's zoned for industrial. Call me for a dollar amount. Call me for the price. That's, that's to the detriment of your community. Because there are other communities where their, their owner is willing to share what the price is. And so as a result, they're going to more than likely get um, the attention. Now, would I say that long term, three or four hundred acres is sufficient? No, I would say long term, that is not. However, it's not about getting more and more land on the rolls today. It's about identifying where that is and then trying to be very strategic in let's do site one. Okay, let's get that built. Let's do site two. Let's get that built. Because you also want to avoid creating too much internal competition. Because when, if you create too much supply in the county, then you're almost bidding against yourself. You're creating, you're creating unnecessary competition for yourself. So my advice is it's not, don't zone more industrial land. It's identify where non-residential growth makes the most sense in the community, short term, midterm, long term. And then let's focus on increasing the quality of some of the ones that are already ready to go. And then over time, we can, we can move into phase two, phase three, phase four. Does that make sense?
Does. Sorry. So when you specifically say improve the quality of the available developable land. You're talking about things like infrastructure, preparing the site, site readiness. Um, even putting a shell in there or something like that, if there was a particular industry that we were targeting for a particular site.
Absolutely. I, those are the types of investments that I think would would go from, because you know, one of the other trends that has been occurring over the last few years is time to, time to open. And so if it's just a raw piece of land where infrastructure stops at the edge of it and there's been no grading. There's no, there's no pad ready site. There's no uh, uh, concrete laid down. There's no shell building. That means it's longer before me to get into the marketplace. And so I'm not sure I'm advocating for building a shell building right now. I would say wade into it gradually. So maybe create a couple of pad ready sites and market those and see how that goes before you go all the way to building your own building. Because unfortunately, when you build your own building, if there isn't an end user fairly certain, it may sit there for a year or two years. And then that becomes a political challenge, frankly. As I, I have had clients before where they've gone and done that. And the building sat empty for a year or two years and people get very antsy. Because they don't understand that economic development is a marathon and not a sprint. And so um, I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying my advice is I would identify. And and if we move into phase two of the study, we'll help identify and and rank and prioritize of the property that you have, which ones we think have the greatest chance for success. But you know, in the absence of that is identify those you feel are the most competitive. And then try and find ways to get them to um, uh, level three or tier three or tier four.
But Kyle, so so if I'm connecting the dots correctly, right? So the recapture rate here, uh, just for keep, keep things simple. We should cut the supportable square feet in half, right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yes. So like I said, I, I think fifty percent is aggressive. I just wanted to show you what a best case scenario would be. Um, I I'd be, I'll be happy to create this table at different percentages. So you can see what those square feet are. That's a very easy thing for me to do. So what I'll do need is I'll recreate this graphic at twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy. And then you could see how that translates and compares against the average store size.
And it would be helpful if you could identify where you think that like, um, like if you think twenty percent is the number we, the working number we ought to use or thirty percent, if you could identify that in in some way that um, doesn't ask you to predict, you know, but just like from a working assumption standpoint.
Sure.
But if I'm connecting the dots correctly, you, you mentioned three times that we should be concentrating uh, residential development. It, it, um, I think you may have been going as far as to say around central garage and um, and and how does that? I I guess, why is that important? And the other piece is that if I'm looking at this chart and we cut those numbers in half, if we have land that's zoned, I mean, we're, we're, we're going to build two restaurants and we're done.
Well, it for a retail perspective, right? So obviously, obviously that is only one component or one facet of non-residential development. You have retail, you have office, you have warehouse. Uh, you have industrial, you have manufacturing, production basis. So, so that would be it from a commercial perspective. Uh, from a retail perspective. Um, so it's not, that's all your choices are. It would be on that. But to answer your first question, need, there's, 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 there's two primary reasons why it's valuable to to cluster your development. One, by clustering your housing together, you're creating a stronger retail node. If you, if, if instead of clustering it around central garage, just for the sake of this conversation, it's spread all throughout the county. That that makes the people on the west side of the county, they might move, they might head west towards Stafford or towards Pennsylvania or Fredericksburg to shop. If it's, if it's all the way to the east, they may cross over and shop in James City County or in Williamsburg. So they're, they're now getting, they now have options that are outside the county. And so your capture rate of their purchases may be less. By clustering them together, you're strengthening the the market potential of central garage. Which frankly, is your strongest commercial node because it is the intersection of thirty and three sixty. And so that is what we call the hundred percent intersection for your community. And so trying to ensure that you're, you're growing your consumer base in that area is very, is 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 strategic. The second primary reason is land consumption. So the goal is to maximize the use of land so that you can develop it on as little of a footprint as possible and get the maximum impact and benefit as possible. And so building away from central garage off of your infrastructure grid, if you will. You're getting maybe one house per acre or one house for two acres as opposed to three or four houses per acre. And so your yield is going to be lower. So you're consume the same amount of dirt, but you're going to get fewer consumers. Which we're talking about from a retail perspective, uh, which is then going to adversely impact the ability to continue to generate demand. So you can increase the variety and type of of retail offerings that you have. And so those are the two primary reasons why we make that recommendation. From an economic development perspective, it puts you in the best position to be successful.
So if I was to draw a conclusion from from this slide and some of the other commentary, I guess in this, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, Kyle. But my conclusion would be that retail is not our focus, that our our focus ought to be elsewhere.
I think, I think, I think retail is not your short term focus. I think as your community continues to grow and as as you continue to um, develop and mature and bring in more jobs, which will attract more people. I think that longer term, midterm, longer term, there could be some opportunities. But um, today, tomorrow, next week, yes, I would say that's probably, other than the effort to try and see if you can get additional restaurants. Um, particularly, for example, like a waterfront restaurant that can take advantage of of rear views. Or it could be tied to like, for example, a bed and breakfast or tied to an event venue. Or, you know, could be part of a brewery or distillery. I mean, that type of thing where you're, where you're cross pollinating economic development. Um, that definitely is something you should be considering in a, as a shorter term strategy. But other than that, yes, I would say retail is probably not your immediate target.
So my, am I, um, like in terms of uh, the tax roll, moving the needle, right? If you, if you look at the the supportable square footage that that we may be able to to create here. And you think about the rent dollars associated with those square footages, right? And you think about, you know, income approach and value in real estate. We're not creating a whole bunch of value doing those things. It, the value is going to be in heavy industry. Is that, is that?
So the the value, yeah, I I would say it, it depends upon the uses. Um, I would say industry probably creates the, the lowest demand for services. It may not create the highest um, revenue generation. I don't have the answer to that question right yet. Need, that's what, that's what the presentation in March will answer. Um, I will say depending upon the performance in the community and as we start to dig into your numbers. We'll be able to give a better sense of where your, your best bang for your buck would be. That being said, it's not going to be substantial, the difference. There, there will be differences, but it's not like it's going to be like ten times.
What won't be substantial?
The difference in the the net fiscal benefit across the different non-residential development types. And and I will tell you, I have yet to work in a community where non-residential development creates a negative fiscal impact. If yours, if you, that happens in your community, it will be the first time I've experienced that. I've never worked in a community where non-residential development created a negative fiscal impact.
Okay, right, got it. I think we'll all agree to that.
Kyle, you listed target industries. Number one was transportation and warehouses. And then number two, agriculture and forestry. Explain some agriculture and forestry industries. I mean, would I, I mean, explain, name some typical agricultural forestry industries that you think that King William could attract.
So um, woodworking co-ops, I, you, I don't know, can you see my screen anymore? Did I stop sharing?
Yeah, it's up there. Yeah.
What's, I'm just woodworking co-op.
So that's where.
What's a woodworking co-op?
So it is a woodworking production facility where you lease space to artisans to make products. They can make chairs, they can make tables, they can make serving spoons, they can make um, three D sculpture art. Um, it, it's a, it's an operation where they take advantage of the, the, the timber that you have to make a value added product. Um, and so like an agribusiness incubator, that's another opportunity. So you already have um, some crop production. Uh, one community that we worked with before, they created a cannery. And so they encouraged um, individuals to grow fruits and vegetables. And they developed a, a, a basically a cooperative cannery where you were able to grow that stuff, bring it, and then you can make preserves or, you know, uh, those sorts of things.
Would I, would I be out of turn to say that, that a, it would be within the agriculture and forestry sector? If I went to a farmer like Charlie and said, what are the suppliers that you need to be a successful farmer and how could we attract those kinds of supportive industries into the county? Is that also in the?
Yeah. Absolutely. So, so from, from the, from the actual growing perspective. Having those conversations can be valuable. I would say it's going to depend upon the scale of, you know, it, it, it's like, um, here's a perfect example. Not agriculture based, but here's a perfect example is, uh, we did a project outside of Camp Lejeune in uh, Onslow County, North Carolina. And uh, someone said they consume forty to sixty thousand stocks a year. Can we get a sock manufacturer to locate next to the base? And my response is sock manufacturers manufacture millions of socks a year. And my response is sock manufacturers manufacture millions of socks a year. And so while, yes, you have a consumption of that, it's it's all about scale, that would make someone want to locate there. And so to answer your question, yes, engaging with your farmers, understand what their vertical supply chain needs are. And is there a potential to create enough demand that a business could sustain? Is definitely a and a an effort that that should be pursued. Now, I don't know what the answer would be, but it's definitely something that would fall within the agriculture and forestry paradigm.
But the the home run would be not just uh like doing something ag here in King William that supports ag in King William, it would be a regional facility that draws everybody else's ag here.
Absolutely, absolutely. You you know, um if 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 you, to that point, me is not just understanding what the farmers in King William, but the the farmers in the region would need, and see if you could bring that there. And and I would add to your comment is, it's not just bringing those um growers or uh are or um uh livestock uh individuals. But also then the consumers who who are going to buy those goods. And bringing them into the community too. It's it's the true cycle of that process that you would want to see, which is where things like distilleries, you know. And and the and the aquaculture, um you know, food production can be there. Is, you know, you you grow the the hops and the barley, you 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 man, you you brew the beer. And then you create the venue in which the people from Northern Virginia or from Richmond or from Hampton Roads come and partay. And you you've hit all three cycles of it.
Hey Kyle, what is W W O O F? If I'm reading it right?
Uh that's a great question. Uh my colleague Matthews Carden is on the line. Um Matthew, I don't know if they can allow you to be unmuted.
It's what? I didn't hear you.
Can you guys hear me? So wolfing, um it's pronounced wolf and the practice is wolfing. It's taking uh volunteer farmers where they live at a farm. Um and work on the farm, they learn about agriculture, learn how to pick crops, learn how to grow crops. And in return, they're given housing um as well as food. Um so that is the concept of wolfing. It's it's a big practice in the UK. Um and it's starting to grow within the US. Um as younger people, especially uh high school and college students are wanting to live in more bucolic and pastoral areas. This.
Yes, and so and so it create almost creates a labor force and an economy unto itself.
So we we've got more to go tonight. We've we've got a full night ahead. So um but I don't want to shut this down. I mean, this is a great conversation. Would it help if you could talk to us about what to expect in March?
Sure, and and so in March is the the remainder of phase one, which is getting into um the fiscal. The the preliminary fiscal analysis of the different of what different land uses types due to the county's revenue and expenditures. And so we're going to be presenting the findings of that, so you can understand, not just from a target industry perspective, but what are what are the opportunities? But then how do those, how do our land use decisions affect our fiscal bottom line? And then we'll be we'll be bringing back some preliminary ideas on how to go about trying to take advantage of what we talked about. So for example, you know, should we rezone more land, or should we focus on trying to get some more uh development ready sites? We'll come up with some preliminary recommendations for the for the group that you want. Uh and 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 provide feedback to us before we write up the final um memorandum.
Okay, so and it it this this group, I think, has has got interest in in trying to narrow in on one something that we can. Yes, we're volunteer, right? It's entirely volunteer, right? And and then and then work with staff to make it happen, right? And then deliver one thing and then hit another single, you know? So um in March, you're going to tell us what we need to do to get ready for for industry, right? And then at what point do we get like, you know, here, three recommendations, go make them happen?
So we'll bring back, we'll bring back a couple of those recommendations to have that conversation, to start the conversation in March. And, you know, and if and if if the the county chooses to move to phase two, we can continue that conversation. Then we'll get even more detailed into like specific locations, for example. So the real estate analysis and site identification is is a part of the phase two piece of this process. So we can, so that we can get a little bit further detailed into those recommendations beyond just some of those, well, here's one, two, three type of things.
That's awesome. That's that's exciting. So you connect the dots for us. Okay, um is there anything else? Shut it off, but we got, we got.
Okay, I I would just like to say thank you, Kyle. I think this is terrific, and it's also timely, given the conversation we're teeing up for Monday. Uh with the joint session with the planning commission. So we could just, it it the faster that you could get that this those slides to us, I think that that we would all be better served so that we could really digest that information and be the subject matter, I wouldn't say experts, but at least um.
Great.
Acknowledge that, yeah, that we can.
I'll get them, I'll get them to you as soon as we get off the phone.
But but remember, if on the on the on the recapture rate, it it tell us what you think we should use as a working assumption.
Fair enough. So I so okay, so then I will include a couple more slides around different percentages, and then I will send the presentation to you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely, have a great night.
Fantastic, so thank you. Okay, so next up, um we've got Tracy Porter, who um. I I read about a program that's called uh forty-three, five, six, five, uh forty-three.
Forty-three, five, sixty program.
But which which happens to be the number square feet in an acre, right? But but it but it's it's a fascinating program. And and uh what what Tracy and his colleagues have been able to do is to take one acre of land and make it crank. I mean, that, I mean, do it doing high value, uh probably, you know, like um uh organics and things like that, right? So so it's intensive farming. But in in talking to Tracy, I I maybe it's two weeks ago, we we got connected.
Last week.
And and just um uh I mean, it was a great conversation. He just started talking about Falkir and some other things he'd done, and he'd written some grants. And and so I I I asked Tracy if he'd be willing to come, uh give us some of his time, talk about some reference points. I think I even called Eugene and and mentioned the 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 farmer's market, uh whatever it is in Falkir. And so we may want to send some folks to go look at that. And and so I think um uh we we have the we we have the the potential, I think, to spring off of what Tracy presents. And come up with something that's within their reach, and Tracy may be able to help us figure out how to how to how to implement. But have a win here in the next six months, you know, and and but but it's going to require all of us getting on the same page. We all ought to agree on what we're doing, so that we own it, right? We're all in it, and and then go make something happen. So anyway, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you so much for for coming.
Well, thank you for inviting me to speak. Um it's nice to see some people I've known, known Gene all my life. Back when I used to, as a teenager, sneaking into the crab piece.
Yeah.
Taking a tube down river and sneak up his bank and eat crabs and stuff and take the tide back home. So and of course, Charlie, we 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 know each other. Uh my name is Tracy Porter. Um I work with Virginia Cooperative Extension under the Small Farm Outreach Program at Virginia State University. And my title is Regional Program Assistant for Eastern Virginia. I cover all the counties in the northern neck, the middle peninsula, Hampton Roads, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, the Virginia eastern shore. And also Waukesha County, eastern shore, Maryland. Next slide, please. Um just a quick background on my extension uh work. I started actually as a King William, King and Queen agent here back in two thousand fifteen. I worked uh till two thousand seventeen. And then, uh I'm sorry, in two thousand seventeen, we had a bunch of, we had two agents retired, which vacated Essex County, Middle Six County, Matthews County, Gloucester, and I covered those counties for the last year I was here. So I had uh my two counties and those counties. Um a quick side note, they've announced my vacancy coming up on five years. They announced the vacancy for a lateral transfer within Virginia Cooperative Extension. So if there's someone already an extension agent that wants to come to King William, King Queen, they'll apply for it, interview. And hopefully y'all will get a replacement for me uh from two thousand eighteen, I was when I left. Um if not, they'll open it up to to the public. Two thousand eighteen, um I decided to go to the Virginia State University Small Farm Outreach Program. And like I said, that's the area I cover now. Uh the difference between it's uh Virginia Tech Extension Agents and small farm agents is they're forty hours a week. And I do all that in twenty nine hours. So uh next slide, please. So this is a mission statement. Um I think y'all have that in your packets, I'm not going to read it. But there's two land-grant universities, Virginia Tech and Virginia State. And that's why Virginia Cooperative Extension is uh conducted with both universities. In general, there's nothing written and studied, but in general, Virginia Tech generally works with the large ag operations. And Virginia State focuses on small farms that are three hundred fifty acres or less. And we also, uh our target audience is usually the typically underserved populations of uh under uh socially disadvantaged minorities and military veterans leaving the military who want to get into farming. Next slide. We're not going to read this, this is just our information on the outreach program, tells you what we do. Um next slide, please. This is our agent map. As you can see, we're all throughout this state of Virginia. We also uh cover four counties on the Maryland eastern shore. And we also cover approximately fifty counties in North Carolina that border the Virginia-Northeast Carolina border. Um I, we just started this in the last year, expanding into North Carolina and Maryland. Um but apparently, uh those two places don't have a similar program that focuses on the needs of the smaller beginning farmers. Next slide, please. And these are just the contacts. Uh we have fifteen agents covering that whole state. And then within the uh also in the Small Farm Outreach Program, we have uh representatives that cover statewide programs. Next slide. This is just an example of some workshops that we're just doing for two months. We average about thirty to thirty-five workshops, demonstrations, uh or on farm 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 tours a month. Um so we're we're pretty active, and we're all up through the state, throughout the state. Um if it's a Zoom program, anyone in the state can attend. If I decide to hold a a B class on Charlie's farm, Virginia State advertises it statewide. It was to Maryland and North Carolina, so anybody can attend their program, and their programs are free. Next slide. So we have a list of partners that we work with, and there's the list. Um pretty much in descending order as far as how much we partner with as well as uh funding. The other difference between Virginia Tech Extension Agents and Small Farm Outreach Agents is uh the General Assembly funds the salaries of the G tech agents. We, like myself and the other fifteen agents you looked at, we're all grant funded. Uh so that's another big difference. Next slide. Um if you get the electronic version of this slide, I recommend you go on these links and and look at some of the stuff that we do. Um we also added a mobile small-ruminate slaughter trailer. Then now, it was one of the big demands in the state. You got a lot of small-ruminate producers, sheep and goat, that um slaughter their um animals for meat. But the uh there's a big huge backlog of getting them into. And some people have to try to travel all the way to in Maryland to get their animals slaughtered, some to Pennsylvania. So Virginia State University developed this program where we bought a forty-foot trailer, we outfitted it. Uh and you can actually take it to the farm. There's a process where the farmer uh has to get certified in five different classes. But once they do that, they pay a small fee. We bring the trailer out to them with a USDA certified butcher, and they get to slaughter their animals uh on on site. So that's a huge assistance to the small operator that has uh is trying to get to the next level of producing meat for uh goat or sheep. Um and also down there, you'll see the link to the Falkir Education Farm. That's a Facebook site. I recommend you get on that and look at the photos. They have uh tons of photos of what they do and what they produce. Uh next slide. This is an aerial view of the Falkir Education Farm. They have a hot tunnel, and they also have a metal shed that has doors on both sides. It open, close, so they can close during inclement weather and give presentations or workshops. They do a tremendous job in the community. It's all volunteer work. The first two years, the county had to pay for the farm manager's salary. And then with grant and volunteer assistance, they've never paid a dime toward this project for the last ten years. So um it will, there's a start across, obviously. But once you get the ball rolling, and uh Jim Hankins is the manager there, he's also a former V C E Extension Agent. Um and he's also helps, he knows how to write grants, and he gives grant funding uh to help run this program. Next slide. This is another incubator farm that V S U um runs. It's at the Carver Center, and outlined in the red is the area that we allow other farmers come to get experience on uh growing. So we have two hot tunnels there that we've installed, but we teach classes on drip irrigation uh and hot tunnel production and field production. They keep, they go out there, they learn, and then they go start their own farm. So that's a true incubator farm. Uh next slide. Now again, um I just want to tell you what the Falkir Education Farm does. Again, y'all can decide what you want to do. A lot of this is applicable uh to uh you can do pretty much anything that you see here that they're doing at the King William High School with FFA program or anywhere in the county. Um so that's the mission statement of the Falkir Education Farm. Next slide. And that's the history. That tells you, uh they're a five oh one C three. Um they created two thousand ten. Next slide. And these are some of the programs they do. Um certainly, all this could be applicable to King William County. They have volunteer workdays, they do demonstrations, uh they do series of workshops. Uh they they execute the uh beginning farmer ranch program that both Virginia Tech and Virginia State operate. And uh they also have the new farmer incubator program. Next slide. This is just a description of incubator program, but basically they bring in people and teach them how to do agricultural uh production. And then what's expected is for them to go out and start their own small farm or agriculture.
Who's doing this teaching?
Jim Hankins, and he also has, uh he does most of it. And again, he's in, he knows how to teach and program because he's a former Extension Agent. Um so he does, I would say, over ninety-five percent of it. Uh but he does bring in some other experts from time to time on on uh topics that may, he he may not be the expert on. So he does leverage Virginia Cooperative Extension Specialists, and he does also have uh uh the Culpeper A and R Agent, the ag agent, uh come out and that Culpeper, Falkir. So there's some uh collaboration. Uh we've we've gone up there and the entire staff's gone to his place and and got tours and stuff like that. So but he he's kind of like the man. Next slide. So this is uh in two thousand twenty-one, they produced a hundred eleven thousand pounds of produce for the local uh food banks. Um two years ago, I think they were up to about eighty thousand, so it goes up every year.
How many acres is that?
Ten acres, ten acres. Ten acres. Ten acres. Um, it's not all in production all year long because they do crop rotation. Um, so I'll have to get with you on how many acres are in production at any given one time. What he does, he practices sustainable agriculture and crop rotation, cover crops. So a lot of times you'll have an area that has just come out of production that he'll put in the cover crop to help rebuild the soil. Next slide. So that's, that's what we do in a nutshell. Um, that's an example of what, a couple of examples of things that you could do in the county. Um, I think uh, starting up with uh, Howard Hill. If you don't know Howard Hill, he's, he's a lean forward and saddle type of guy. And he's also partnered with us before both when I was in it. Uh, King William Agent as well as Virginia State Agent. So, um. You know, there, there's all sorts. Before y'all got here, I talked to um, Charlie. And me a little bit about some options. And one of the things was maybe doing something at King William, like put up a, a hot tunnel for demonstration. But the other thing we talked about was um, it's been a need for as long as Charlie's been here too. I, I grew up down here on the Madison River, just down river, upriver from Gene. And for as long as I've been here, there's just nowhere to do any kind of workshops and demonstration that are undercover. So a, an educational pavilion, uh, maybe that can go out on the school and um. But anything you build on a school property will be utilized for the next generation. Right now, the average farmer's age is sixty-three. And we don't have a lot of people interested coming up. Um, and if we don't plant the seed now with the, with the youth. Um, all that farm and and we're a big farm community will end up being sold off and going into residential or commercial. Um, and Virginia, the biggest two revenues in the state are ag and forestry. And so you don't want, you don't want the next generation to. To go off and not have another generation to fill the shoes. So I also agree that anything you do ag-related needs to involve uh, the youth. Now, one other thing real quick. If y'all decide you want to all go up to Falkir. VSU has a twenty-six passenger bus. It's more convenient for you. We could pick everybody up at Central Garage and take you to Falkir. Um, get to talk to Jim Hankins one-on-one, ask all the questions you want. And then um, he just asked for, you know, at least one week's notice, preferably two weeks' notice. But I can, I can schedule that. Or we can just all meet up there.
What do you guys think? So is there, is there, is the beginning, is there a beginning of something here? And I don't know, you will have, have thoughts. I mean, do you see an opportunity or?
Certainly an opportunity. Yeah, well, I think we need to ask more questions. Absolutely, I know more about it, but. Fifty, really, fifteen, there was another component from what you heard from the previous speaker. Yeah, so what I took away from the previous speaker is if you, if you use a space as an incubator farm. You can teach other people to grow small scale. But what's big on the small scale is not just the fresh produce, but it's also the value-added products.
All right.
There's uh, USDA, we work real close with USDA Real Development. Um, there's a lady in the. Uh, Farmville, in the Farmville Office named Laurette Tucker. And she writes grants, she helps uh, small producers write grants for value-added product grants. Walk-in coolers, uh, walk-in freezers, anything that's gonna help you store. Or make your value-added product. There's grant money, not cost share, but grant money available for that. So if you get someone successful and they, and they want to grow. We are the kind do it with our partners to get you cost share or grants to help you get to the next level.
What about, uh, it's not hard to form a five oh one, if I will, pre-seed, right? It, it, could that be, can we do something there?
Well, that's, that's what Jim did. Jim started out, the county paid his first two years. And after the first two years, he had enough volunteers and grant money. That this operation that produces a hundred eleven thousand pounds of food for the food bank costs the county nothing. Hasn't cost the county nothing for the last ten years.
You go back to the first presenter tonight, I mean, maybe there's some money there for salary, you know? I just, it's, it's just, it's just figuring out how to pull these pieces together and getting excited about it. So when we make it happen. And I think it starts with just agreeing on the process and maybe the place to start is to go look at somebody else's success.
Yeah, I will tell you from the first presenter, what struck me as an opportunity. Was um, thinking about, one of the challenges the small farmer has, and I'm not talking conventional. Corn, wheat, soybeans, a small grain, I'm talking about the niche market people. We talked about growing niche uh, ginger, tamarack.
Unmorgue.
Yeah, these are high-value niche crops. Um, they, you can produce a lot on a small footprint. Um, but the problem is, where do they go to sell it? So if there was a food hub. Or a packing facility, a cold storage, where everyone could come and bring their stuff, where it's uh. You know, aggregated, separated, then shipped to uh, that's an opportunity. If you find someone that's gonna want to start that business. To drive stuff to DC, to drop stuff to Maryland, the Baltimore, uh, you know, Hampton Roads. That's where you're gonna get a lot more beginning farmers and small farmers. They got a first half of place to sell. And we tell people, never plant the first seed until you have it sold. So that's a limiting factor in this, in this whole eastern Virginia, is where to sell. Um, where can they unload their stuff? Um, and then of course.
And then the money would be at a farmer's market in DC or separate and in the big cities. And so you.
Yes, right? So I, everything I grew on my farm, I wholesale to a guy in Mechanicsville. And he took, he took it to the National Mall Farmer's Market and made money. So we both made money. But if I didn't have him, I'm, I can be, I can grow anything you want.
Yep.
But where am I, where am I gonna sell it?
Yep, you got it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think I've heard, um, I'm, I'm listening and I'm, I'm trying to, uh, that, that, that there's an opportunity or need or. Um, that there's demand for a slaughterhouse, so the slot, right? And then cold storage?
Yes, uh, or just uh, yeah, cold storage or uh, freezer storage. Um, you know, there's um, the slaughterhouse is definitely a demand because right now. The people that I know that are growing mainly small remnants, but you do have some cattle. It's also, but hogs is another one. You have to get with the hog processor. There's one in Falkir and there's one up in the Shandor Valley. You gotta get with them a year out. And if you.
Father Grant for that, because I know, like for me as a hunter, because if the places I go. There is processing plants right there for you here and other animals can be processed. And here, there's nothing, nowhere around here.
You gotta go to North Carolina or you gotta go.
Three hour trip for me, and I wanted to go that way.
Yeah.
Now, but can it be multitude, like deer, cow, pigs, you know, is it? Would the state come in and bring a butcher in if you had opportunity for this?
Well, that, that's where I got gathered from that workforce development person. But if we, if, if that business needs to have a staff USDA inspector, which it does, if you're gonna sell. Um, so by the way, you can't sell wild, wild meat.
No, I was talking about my own cat.
Right, oh, you, you.
His, his.
Right, so. There's no, nothing convenient.
No.
And if, if for whatever reason you got your um, hogs lined up. Spaced out to grow, be butcher, be a butcher weight for your appointment. That you had to make a year in advance and something happens unpredictable and you miss your appointment. You can't get your hogs butchered. So the, 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 the uh, slaughter facility is, I would say, the biggest need for those and uh, in livestock.
And will they handle like deer for hungry? Because like here, anywhere, I could go to Lynchburg or somewhere else.
Right, because best of my knowledge, you cannot take wild game and put it in a USDA slaughter facility.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, the other, the other issue. Um, is there's no place right now for the small producer to process their chicken. So everybody has to go spend three to five thousand dollars on equipment and process their own chicken. So there's an economy of scale issue there, a constraint. Because it's not, uh, the return on investment is not there if you're just producing. And slaughtering a thousand birds, which is the VDAX limit. Uh, which I know Farm Bureau has helped us fight that for a while. VDAX just arbitrarily pulled out a thousand birds a calendar year that you can process and sell without an inspection. But the next level up is thirty thousand birds. There's nothing reasonable in between. One of the reasons I got to process embroilers. Is because that restraint of a thousand bird a calendar year. I, I, I needed to, I need, I had the capacity and the sales to, to do maybe three, four thousand. But there's a huge gray area between a thousand birds and thirty thousand birds where they want you to be inspected. So that's another thing is if there's a facility where small farmers can bring in their poultry. And have it processed and inspected, uh, that's another thing that's in a big need in this area. So for a few, uh, small fruits and vegetables, it's cold storage, whether walking coolers or walking freezer. Um, for the livestock, it's the slaughter facilities. And for the poultry, it's also the slaughter facilities. So those are the three things that would benefit. If you could find someone that wants to, to um, to do that. Then I think that's where you leverage workforce development to get the training, the certification. And maybe um, help pay for the uh, state inspector. So those are a couple of ideas.
Tracy, it, it, this facility in Falkir, is a training facility, if you will, it's, it's.
It's education.
So that people that want to go and small-time farming uh, could go and get educated on how to do that.
That's exactly right.
You, you're proposed, I mean, for King William. I'm trying to understand the, the timeline, the process. Something like Falkir has. To, 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 to bring regional partners in, regional people who want to go into this particular industry. To educate them and get them started. And that facility could be funded by grants. It's, it's so that wouldn't cost the county much. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, and we can talk to uh, Jim Hankins about how he does that, because he's the one that writes all the grants. Um, the other thing I want to say is uh, I haven't seen it in a while. But uh, there was about a three hundred thousand dollar grant for schools. Uh, to put in an educational agriculture in the classroom. It was under a STEM grant. Science, Technology, Engineering, Math. I helped write that grant. Well, I wrote the grant for West Point High School. And um, it was to put in a uh, a concrete floor of the pavilion, which is, was gonna be the learning center. And on, on the backside of that pavilion was an enclosed cold facility and processing area. And we had garden space and we even had a mobile chicken coop. The purpose was to teach all levels of education there, because you know, they got all three schools there. And they, they could go out in the classroom and learn their SOLs in science and technology. At the pavilion in the garden. And then they could even uh, raise their own food. Process and clean it for the cafeteria for the lunches, salads, and that kind of thing.
Three hundred thousand dollars, we could do something.
Yeah, um, and I was telling uh, Charlie and Mead, um. About three days before this was gonna be a done deal and we were gonna submit it. Um, there's a couple of people in within the school system that weren't. You know, brought into this and didn't put, you know, their input into it, and they kind of got hurt. And raised a big stink and the superintendent decided not to, not to do it. So he didn't submit it. Um, and so they, they lost that opportunity to do that. But I think after talking to Charlie, you can do this in phases. You can do something with the most impact right away by putting something similar to that at King William High School. You got the guy that's already being paid that would do it. And then you got your students there and then Hamilton Homes. Uh, they still call it Hamilton Homes? I'm, I'm dating myself.
Middle School.
Yeah, Hamilton Homes of Quentin and Cool Springs, they can do field trips there and learn about the STEM. But you package it for, for STEM, well, they now call it STEAM. But um, it's all science, technology, education, and math, and, and how you present it. Uh, but they're learning where their food comes from. And they're learning sustainable agricultural practices and they're learning how to grow. And somewhere, like Charlie said, somewhere, if you run a, a five hundred kids through there. There's gonna be a percentage that, that enjoy that and go, you know what, this is something I could do, I want to do. And that's gonna replace your sixty-three-year-old, sixty-three-year-old farmers that are beginning to retire. Um.
So EDA, while I'm trying to tie this all into economic development for King William. We would do something like this, like Falkir did, to track or to teach our youth. So that they would uh, go out and stay in King William and, and, and farm.
Yes, that's what, that's what.
Bottom line, yeah.
That's what Jim Hankins does.
Livelihood here.
Yeah.
And keep us rural, a rural character, if you will, instead of.
Right, you can do a lot of farming and value-added products. Uh, on five acres or less with sales that generate sales and use tax every quarter. When you sell the products. I fill out a sales and use tax every quarter based on where I sell my products. So those localities will get through the state their cut of the sales and use tax. So you're generating. Uh, you know, livelihood, you're promoting the agriculture, the ruralness of King William. But at the same time, they're selling. And again, the big thing with the small producers are the value-added products. You know, one of the classes I teach is growing mushrooms on lawns. Uh, a lot of products have a short shelf life. Mushrooms is one of them. But the good thing about value-added products, the definition of a value-added product is you've changed the product to the point where you can't put it back. So if I can't unload my fresh mushrooms. I draw them and then I vacuum seal them. I slap on a VDAX-approved label and I sell dried mushrooms. Well, that's the good thing about most of your small niche crops is when they're approaching the end of their shelf life. You can make a value-added product out of it. Elderberries is really a hot seller right now for medicinal purposes. Elderberry syrup, of, of berry uh, tinctures. But elderberry fruit sells uh, uh, fresh, but what do you do with it? After five days when it starts to deteriorate, you turn it into a value-added product. So um, we have a small fruit specialist at Virginia State named Dr. Rafi. Uh, we have a lot of specialists, uh, room, small remnant, any kind of specialty, high-value crop that you want to grow. We will come out to that person's property and do a site visit.
Can, can you bring that to us here? Can you get us tapped into those resources?
We, you already tapped in. Anybody who contacts me in any of my nineteen counties and municipalities. I come out and do a site visit. I just went Saturday, was my day off, but it's okay. That's when they were available. I went Saturday out to uh, Middlesex and did a site visit on a beginning farm. He's only been trying, struggling for two years before he heard about us. And we, you go out there and you see what they got, you listen to what they want to do. And then you give them recommendations on how to get there. And a lot of it is getting them down to the FSA office to get a farm number. Going to see Soil and Water Contamination District or DCR or NRCS for cover crops. So we are, we do a lot of onsite technical assistance and we also have specialists. Um, that will also come out and do that. Uh, we got a specialist in uh, pond and fish management. We've held uh, pond manager classes in King William. So we've done a lot in the area. So we will be the part that gives the technical assistance for anything y'all do. So we will be the part that gives the technical assistance for anything y'all do. Um.
So 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 might I suggest that we talk about book of process, I think, get it from here to there and and um. Think maybe a good first step might be to do a the site visit in Falkir, right?
I think a site visit.
At least put, you know, get eyes on and.
And another thing we can do is um I can start. Uh checking around, cause we get grants down to us all the time in email. USDA, NIFA grants, uh National Institute of Food um grants. And ninety percent of them I look at. And I read them and I don't do anything with them because most of these grants coming down are for public schools. State and local uh uh agencies. Uh Indian tribes. It's not Harley M or the actual small farmer. So I see them come across my email, but I don't pay any attention because it doesn't serve my clients. But now that I'm aware that y'all are looking for something, I'll start forwarding that to you and you can read through them. And figure out if it's a grant that you can apply for.
So is this something you wanna do?
Yeah, cause earlier last year we did Farm Bureau, a program at Hound's for, I don't know, hundreds of kids. But it was teaching the kids how to start food, where it come from. And the whole, you know, one end to the other of showing the end product. And everything came from my garden, really.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a big success and that's why Howard was after this part to do between those. I actually been teaching the boy, he's seventy, eight years old now. He's been flat my green house with me for four years. I sat back, he taught the kids in the class how to do everything.
The other. Uh cog in the wheel for economic development. Is when you get kids interested. Um other growers in the county will contact Howard Hill for farm labor in the summer. And so a lot of Howard Hill's F F A students will go out to local farms. And that helps, that helps the farmer. Uh Luke Holman is an example. Luke Holman.
Yes.
Um he gets, he gets most of his farm labor from referrals from Howard Hill. And you know, I I also help him, but as far as fine labor and stuff, but.
He needs to be part of this mix. And same thing, uh Howard has got down by side, made machinery. Didn't have three or four kids from high school, just started apprenticeship with him.
Right.
And one of them gone on, so I started on this.
The other one I think you may wanna involve, because he has started a successful small business on a small scale. Um is Chris Couch. Um so there's, there's enough small niche market. Niche market producers out there that could probably expand. I mean, I work with a lot of them. Um Beesnese Farm, where, which is right down the road from uh between here and West Point. Uh they've done really well. Um Tim and Becky Vaughn in Alen, they do hogs and broilers. Um so you know, there's, there's. If if you get them to me, I'll teach them how to do what they wanna do. But there's still that missing part. Where do they sell? Where do they slaughter? So there's, I can teach anybody to do anything properly to be successful, but. It's like I say, don't plant the first seed until you have it sold.
Yeah.
We got a marketing specialist at Virginia State University. Who will come to the farmer and teach them how to market their uh their product. Uh teach them how to do signage and farm stand displays to make it more appealing. So we have the resources. So if you figure out what you wanna do.
So I think the first step is, is I think we're in agreement, like we'd like you to Falkir candidate, you could help us arrange that and and.
What, I just need a date from y'all. Give me, give me two or three dates that are, you know, two weeks away. And then if you want the bus, we can all meet at Central Garage. If not, I can give you the uh. The pen, the Google pen, and we'll all meet up there.
Can I suggest we do that over email?
Yes. Do what?
That you, oh, we're gonna figure this out over email. And so we.
Yeah.
Yeah, but as opposed to.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to, you know, hijack your time.
That's fine, that's great.
But I'm I'm gonna give each of y'all a card.
And uh, you know, contact me. And just after, or anybody that you know that they do their service and hopefully. Hopefully they all could hear King William. Uh so.
Thank you so much for your time. This has been been uh thought provoking and uh and uh that's it.
And uh on that one slide, I gave you the uh. The website of.
Yes.
Our extension. If you go to that website, you can click on the subscribe button. You'll get a weekly email that'll tell you all of our events coming up. If you see something that you want a briefing on or an explanation or even attend. Uh let me know. And then also there's the calendar icon where you can click on the counter, calendar. And you go and look at the events coming up. You click on it, it gives you a description, a PDF flyer that describes it and then you just register for it. So just let me know what y'all need help with.
Thank you so much. It's just, this is incredible. It seems like this may gloss in lights.
I do think it ties right into what we heard from. Cut.
That's true. So, okay, so we've got uh treasurer's report is is up next.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's really no, nothing to report. We didn't have anything in your packet. We start moving some money around in different ways and we'll uh we'll present that as as needed.
Okay, I've got one in in the chairman's report, I've got one item that I've um wanted to to um. Suggest or whatever. And so I I I just wanted to start by reading the purpose. Uh for the E D A, the the purpose of creating the authority is so that such authority may. May acquire owned leased disposal properties to the end that such uh uh to the end that such authority may. Be able to promote industry and develop trade by inducing manufacturing, industrial, governmental and commercial enterprises. To locate in or remain in the Commonwealth and further the use of its agricultural products and natural resources. And so what I've, what I've wanted to throw out was um the idea that uh uh. Putting putting together a process to bring that, to bring forward ideas. And so one of the things that I think might be helpful is uh. Like 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 maybe having a little write-up in in advance or something that everybody can read and consider and think about. And I I just just wanted to throw that out as as an idea. And it and it may help to keep us more focused as we're having discussions. So we're discussing a specific thing as opposed to just ideas.
So write up, what, in what way?
So I'm I'm um. I haven't really refined it, but I'm just, I'm trying to think of a way that we can have more targeted discussion, more focused discussion. And and one thought would be to uh if if I've got an idea. Put it center wide and then send it around in advance or like think about it.
Yeah, so for for, I mean, I think like on this, this uh. The Falkir Farm replication, you know, i- if we get to the point where we go up there and we see it and we find somebody who really wants to. Maybe put some energy behind it, we could take the time to develop a concept brief. Of how we could be involved in something like like the Falkir Farm. Circulate it so that we can have some focused discussion and that we're not uh kind of running in circles, I guess, in these conversations.
Part of it is is it's um just from my own. The way I work is when I set something in writing, I go through the process of refining what I'm, what I'm thinking about. And and I get more focused and um. And even if it's like limited to a page, you know, but just, just so at least it's on paper and we can all begin to think about what it is. We wanna discuss and actually put it on the agenda. And have a focused discussion about whatever that item is. It's just a thought, not just, just wanna throw it out. Um see if that makes sense and if it's something we wanna do.
So if we've got an idea and we want to discuss it our next meeting, throw that out there and get it on the agenda. Hey, look, I'm thinking, but just uh we all, let's just kick it around, that's.
Yeah.
An idea to promote economic development or any kind of idea that's. That um up and coming or somebody's looking for land or.
Yeah.
Something.
And and write.
Make sure we discuss it, I guess.
And then write a paragraph on on what it is, so so it can get get included in the packet, so that we can have a specific discussion about a specific item.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is that something? I think it may help, it certainly helped me.
Yeah.
And and preparing for things.
As we get older, I get forgetful. It helps me.
All right, so do we need a motion or is that just something we agree on or what? I guess we.
I think.
Need a motion?
We just, we just. I think as the chair, you can insist upon that.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll assist upon that. All right, so there it is. All right, so then we've got a public comment period, right? I haven't missed anything, have I? No, all right, um there's nobody here. Uh we've got, our next meeting is Monday, February fourteenth. It's a joint work session with uh the Planning Commission of Board Supervisors. Uh unfinished business and uh Mr. Ashcroft uh has a proposal.
Mr. Chairman, this was at your uh your request as as the members of the E D A know, you've been working. Let's say for several months now with a matrix and trying to identify uh. Qualifications and characteristics uh that would complete the uh the makeup of your of your authority. Making sure that there's a balance of uh of business and professional and uh. And the citizens as as a representation of the county. Uh tonight, uh again, at the request of the chairman, uh staff is uh recommending that the authority consider. Making a recommendation to the board of supervisors that. Uh emphasis for the remaining two vacancies that you have on the authority. Would come from the legal community and come from the accounting uh community, which uh. Which I would assume would could also uh uh include someone from the banking area, I would think, finance, someone with a finance background. So if that'd be something that the board would want to consider, you could make that recommendation. And then I certainly will communicate to that to the board supervisor.
I welcome the suggestion, I think, in our research with what we have available to us and kind of some. Certainly some areas of expertise that aren't here. I think both of those fields would be welcome additions. So. If there's more discussion, we can have it, but in the meantime, I would make a motion that we make such a recommendation to the board of supervisors that Mr. Ashcraft just presented to us.
So you're gonna recommend to the board that we're looking for two more positions and we want them in these two areas and that.
Sure.
And then for that, we hopefully will, to the public, this was what we're looking for?
Certainly, give strong consideration that uh.
Okay.
Uh individuals from those two professions could consider applying.
Yeah.
As you know, uh we're, we take applications from from anyone.
Yeah.
And right now, I don't think we have any. Do we, do we have a sprayer? Do we have some? Okay, um with, you know, you may wanna revisit those if you haven't seen them for a while.
We don't have any in those particular two areas.
That's correct. I believe that's correct, yes. So.
Yeah.
So that's uh, that's the message that I will communicate back to the board.
Yeah.
Does it work for everybody?
Yeah.
I I think it, I think it would help us particularly if we're actually like we're gonna launch on some of this stuff, grant writing, I would just.
Yeah.
Somebody who can help, help with that stuff.
One question I have is uh. How long do we wait? The hard part is trying to get people to serve us. If we don't have none in a month or two, can we go look at people that's there? I'm just asking.
One, one way to do it is is for us to think about people that we know who might be in those professions and encourage them to make application. I mean, that's one way to handle it.
Absolutely. And we can also target uh. We obviously would continue to seek applications, but just like you would, when you have job openings. You have preference of qualifications that you're looking for and we can target, we can target that as well.
So.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Second.
Great, okay. Closed meeting. Let's see, we need a uh motion, a motion, a second and a full roll call.
I move that we convene a closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash three seven one one eight five of the Code of Virginia. To discuss prospective business or industry expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh opposed? Are we now in closed session? Shut that down or how does this?
I'll put. Oh, roll.
Yes. How do you hear you, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Long?
Ah, yes.
Here. Yes, here.
Mr. Chairman, uh logistically, uh since we have one of our members that's on uh, that's on Zoom. It would be easier if we could just stay in here.
Sure.
And we would keep him on uh online and then we would move members of the public. To a meeting room on Zoom and then bring them back after you have completed your business.
I think we want uh Mr. Long.
Sure, absolutely. So that's how we'll uh we'll do that. So members of the public would be uh.
Okay.
Would would be put in that uh room for for just a few minutes and then when you come back out and they're still there. We would uh report any action that comes of that.
So Chris, are you, are you doing that now? Do I, do I need to do anything?
Mrs. Schumacher, if you're uh, if you can hear us, we would appreciate if you would move into the, into the meeting room. Well, I thought that was the action that we take, that we 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 do that uh.
Rather than using the breakout rooms, could you use the waiting room?
Yeah, I think we've accomplished that now.
Travis, you still with? Reconvene in open session in accordance with section two point two. We good? We back on? All right. Um we need a motion uh to. Read the, our language.
We need a motion to read the language. I I make, I I make a motion to reconvene in open session.
Oh, I thought we had to read it twice. Beginning and at the end too. All right, great. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, um. So how do I do that? How do I certify?
There's a stamp somewhere.
I thought we had to read that thing twice, but. Jay, can you take care of us here?
Working on it. Oh, no.
So you don't have to read the whole thing, just call out. That's all I want.
Well, I can't.
I make a motion to approve standing resolution S R one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
The here's.
Uh.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye. Aye. Okay, um are we adjourned? I think we are adjourned.
Second. Second. Moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We just did a public service.
What's that?